Later on the same weekend.
Don't decide which one of those.
It's a little.
Hands being a book.
Read this.
This is reading glasses.
Oh, harsh.
Saw it off in the middle of the.
She's like, where are you at? Your office?
My friend's university.
Yeah.
Maple, right? It's my friend's university.
Standard.
We got a light. It just lit up like daylight.
Wow.
Well, eventually.
And you're probably paying for the.
Huh? I talked to the neighbor ladies. Yeah, I heard something in the middle of the. I got that. Saw a couple guys that I'm in a.
Sure.
Okay. All in order. We'll start with the pledge and prayers of our captain. Resemmy.
But allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go open, please. Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity to get together as a body to see a way where we might be able to make our community a better place to live and work. We just pray that the decisions that we make will be wise and prudent decisions and be for the betterment of our city and for the betterment of those that live there. Just ask that you would be with each of those that are entrusted to carry for our city as well. If I see some, as you can say. Amen. Okay. I see approval of the agenda. You guys have any problems with? Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, citizen comments? Anybody from the audience that would like to say a few words? Hey. I didn't want to cut in front of anybody. You've ever heard. State's name and address. You bet.
Kevin Beetson. I live at 405 Richards Road. I also own some property on West South Street that I'd like to talk about a little bit. I've talked with Micah about this before. He knows I was coming up today, too. Anyway, it's about the third time in a year that we've had a issue with the house next door. I'm not going to say names and an address. We can talk about that later if you want, and I have some papers to give you. They have a Mustafa that they don't clean up after. They're, they have about a 10-foot leash. They put the dog on the leash. It goes out the front door, and that's where its bathroom is. And for anybody that doesn't think that means a lot, I actually got Great Dane instead of Mustafa on this, but they're about the same size. A Great Dane averages 500 to 700 grams every time it goes to the bathroom. That's 1.2 to 1.5 pounds. So they go one to five times a day, so I use three times a day. So using three times a day at a lighter weight of 1.2 pounds, that comes up to a minimum of 54 pounds in 15 days. And my people that live there have to smell this day after day after day. Micah's seen pictures as well. They've talked to him a couple of times, but the smell after the rain is really bad, as you can imagine. And it's kind of not just my problem because this property backs up to the park over here. So when it rains, all of our stuff drains off into your park, right by where the frisbee goals are in that. So unknowingly, people and their children are walking through this as well. But it's just something that we keep going over and over and over, and they don't seem to want to do anything about it. Right now, they just cleaned off the area. They saw us looking, so they cleaned off the area and they throw it on the side of the house. They try to hide it in the gardening by the air conditioners, which our air conditioners are maybe eight feet apart. And it's just getting worse and worse. So I'm coming to the city. I'm asking for help. It's not a nuisance, it's a hazard. And I don't know if anybody's ever looked up at what pet waste does, but people get sick from Salmonella, E. coli, and other infections. Pet waste is toxic, and the Environmental Protection Agency estimates that waste produced by 100 dogs in two to three days can contain enough bacteria to temporarily close a bay for swimming. And if we're talking about a bay, this was from the New England Department of Public Health. We don't really have a health inspector. I know it says so on the thing, but it's just kind of a, I think it's part of the Micah's job, too, to be the health person. So I'm asking for help. When I read the codes, it's in the codes to do it, and 8215 and 8208 about failure to comply. It talks about continuous notices. And I'm just asking the city for help. It's unacceptable, and it's been going on for years over there.
So Kevin, you've spoken to Micah or Brian about this matter?
This is the first I've heard.
It's the first time, Brian. I've talked to Micah, and I let him know I was coming up today to talk about it again because from what I understand, every time you go there, it's like the first time again. You don't continually go up and say, look, you're a repeat offender. I don't know if there's a way the board can say this is a repeat issue, but I can't come up here every 15 days and say, I got another 54 pounds. It's just not fair.
And we have a specific portion of the code that requires mitigation for that, specifically related to dog feces.
Yeah. So here I am. I'm asking for help. I know the letter's been sent. That gives them 15 days to comply after they receive it. And I won't tell you what I charge rent there, but I'm losing big money every month. My rent over there is 250 less than my other unit to keep them there. So it's also become a financial burden to me, and I know if they leave, nobody's going to walk up that sidewalk and say, I want to live here. No way. In fact, I'd even invite you all to a free lunch one afternoon if you'd like to come out there. We can get pizza. I'll invite you all to sit in the front yard with me. We'll have a delicious lunch.
I've got two golden retrievers. They keep me busy on my own property.
We have dogs, too. We clean up after them daily, so.
Well, Kevin, we will get back with you. I'm sure that Brian will get back with you.
Okay.
We'll resolve this.
Okay, I'd appreciate it. And I'll say one other thing. I used to come up here, and I wasn't real impressed with the water park thing, but now that you built it, I don't have little kids, but I love seeing them play out there, so kudos for your water park. I thought it was a waste of money, but I was wrong.
Thank you, Kevin. Anybody else? Saying no, we'll move on to the next item. Item E. Appointment.
Honorable governing body, so we recently had an Eagle Scout reach out, and I'll go ahead and introduce him right now. This is Peyton Perez and his mom, Danielle. Peyton approached the city about a potential Eagle Scout project back at the end of January. We were open to suggestions, and he suggested or identified the shaded park benches at Means Park, which are in pretty desperate need of rehabilitation or at least some touch up. So there are four benches in total. They surround the area, the gated area surrounding the pool. So the concrete pads underneath the benches are still relatively sturdy. We were able to identify that the roofs of the benches and the structural posts are all in good shape. However, some of the wood on the bench seats and the sides is rotted and warped, is in need of replacement along with a good coat of paint. So city staff believes the best course of action is to go ahead and restore the existing benches as they are structurally sound and a very popular attraction during the pool season. Project to replace the benches entirely with modern equipment would be very costly and require several years of budget planning. So city staff needs to determine exactly what needs to be done internally versus what Peyton wants to do, and we're still working on that. We want to conduct this work in as timely a manner as possible and set Peyton up for him and the Eagle Scouts that he's going to be working with to carry out their portion of the project. So the goal of the project is to beautify the park benches for several years to come. Maintaining the current benches, again, is an affordable way to extend the immediate lifespan, and that is our current goal. So Peyton has identified April 9th and 10th to complete this work and may do a little preparation or may do a little work after that, but we're hoping to have them done in April, if possible. Here's an example right here of a couple of the benches. So again, the posts are in good shape. The shingles are in pretty good shape. The concrete pads are in good shape, but power washing would go a long ways there. Really, just the bench seats are a little bowed. Some of these side posts are a little rotted out or warped, and then a good coat of paint. One thing Peyton inquired about and wanted to get feedback from the body on is going with a two-tone approach on this, so sticking with the Goddard glue down here, the white on the interior, and then maybe going with an Eisenhower light blue up here. Peyton, is that what you had in mind? So we wanted some feedback from the body on that.
I think that's perfect. That's good with me.
Staff is considering a budget of $3,000 for lumber and building supplies. And then roughly $1,000 will be budgeted for paint, the paint supplies, and any other supplies that Peyton's able to come up with. So upon authorization tonight, we're going to reach out to Fisher Lumber and get a more exact quote on the total amount. Again, so we're just seeking any direction you have. No legal issues with this. And we're happy to take any comments or questions, or if you have any questions for Peyton, he's right here.
So this is the requirement for becoming an Eagle Scout. This is the project. What's next?
Well, after I come Eagle, I'm going out to Navy. I'll hopefully along with promotion and such.
Awesome. Well, I have no problem with that. Just like to make sure that some of the city staff would be looking in on city revision from time to time.
I.
We will definitely.
It's a little early, but I think we might have a guy willing to work maybe the weekend there, there, at least part of it.
Yeah, we can make, we can make it happen. Definitely. Does, do you need any specific tools to maybe drill those boards in? We're going to. Yeah, we've got adequate tools for that, and we'll definitely work with them on this. Okay. Perfect.
We do have some great things.
Some great. I think we may have used all that paint in the wellhouse.
Yeah, there we go. Do you have great things?
There we go. Around my five, six gallons left.
We used some of it to paint one of the wellhouses when we did the well seven of the new building on us, so we, I'd have to look to see how much we have. We thought it was a good color, so we used it.
We could maybe use the gray.
Yeah, possibly.
Just to touch that.
No heights this time, luckily.
No bucket truck.
No bucket truck. No lift.
So what if you did the, you know how your board is always sagging? Like this, you know what I'm saying? What if you?
You'll notice if you look at the bench on this one here, there's a board that runs by earlier than there.
Yeah.
And when that's, when that's replaced, that'll hold that board, keep it from sagging quickly. I mean, there were, so eventually they will.
There, right there, the lower picture?
Yeah, on the right one, it doesn't seem to have that board there, but on the left one it does, so we'll make sure that it's put back together like that.
So when George, one of our fine public works employees, was out there looking with me, he brought that up. Maybe some support in the middle here, and then like this is a double-sided one, some support on the back beams there so we can avoid some of that sagging and bowing in the future. So we counted for quite a bit of extra lumber just to, for some extra support so we're not dealing with this, because I imagine they'd be bowing out in a year or two like that, so. Planning on beefing them up a little bit.
Okay.
So that's all I have. We appreciate Peyton for taking the initiative and helping the city out.
We appreciate you. Guys, have any more questions?
No. Good project.
Do we need to move to authorize this, or?
Do we got to make a motion?
You can just authorize the Eagle Scout project in Means Park. Usually it's receive and file, but if you wanted to be formal, you could.
We can be formal. All right, all motion to move the project forward.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Peyton.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Doctor.
Thanks.
Honorable mayor and city council, this is item E2. This is the appointment of Ryan Walker to the planning commission. So the planning commissioners operate on a three-year term basis. It's one-third of the planning commissioners being reappointed each year. The mayor appoints the commissioners to office, and they are confirmed by the governing body. Doug Van Amberg retired from this position on December 13, 2021, ending his three-year term on the mark. Doug Van Amberg did fill one of two positions required by state law dictating that two of the planning commissioners elected be outside the city limits but within three miles. Justin Parks currently fills one of these two positions, and Ryan Walker qualifies for the second position. The city council did approve the meaning of planning commission bylaws on February 7, 2022. Planning Commission bylaws, Article 1 for members. The number of members of the planning commission is fixed at seven. Two members shall reside outside the city limits but within three miles of the corporate limits of the city of Goddard. This is a reflection of state law. The remaining five members shall reside within the corporate city limits, and member shall be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. Member shall serve a term of three years. Each term commencing on the expiration term of the member's predecessor with the term running for the first city council meeting in December. Initial term call commences, shall commence within the appointment of two. Commissioner shall serve four initial term until successful appointment in December 2023. This is sort of a general outline of how that would play out. This is what it would look like of how it would play out graphically. So appointed in 2022, second year would be 2023, third year would be 2024, and then you would renew that term in December of 2024. So this is Ryan Walker. He is a senior vice president at Star Lumber on the Kansas Foreign Division. His education is a bachelor of science in family studies and human services with emphasis in personal finance planning, Kansas State University, master's of business administration, Newman University. Hobbies include volunteering at St. Elizabeth Ann Seaton Catholic Parish and youth sports coach, and he's lived for four years in Cedric County. Financially none, and legally it's proved as the form. It is recommended in the city council, I approve the mayor's decision to appoint Ryan Walker to the planning commission. And his bio was included in the agenda packet. If you do have any questions.
Me and Micah had lunch with him, and it seems like a very capable gentleman to handle the job. I think it would be wanted to improve. Looks to approve Ryan Walker. Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. It's incident that you guys have any problems with the council. What's on the next? Give a, this paper, a month's due issue.
Yeah. So you make a motion to approve, like extended term.
Second. You make it?
Yep.
Okay. Motion by Brent. Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Item H1. Stand up. I don't want to do it. Go ahead. You want me to? Okay. Very good.
So this is item H1, sewer and water equity fee and city infrastructure benefit fee. This is something that has been discussed before, and we're bringing it back around. It's a sort of an ongoing discussion. This item in particular will be sort of a review, and then any questions that city council might have, feel free to ask them. There will be no binding action on this item. This is kind of a receive and file. City staff will take the comments from city council and adopt them and hopefully come up with a revision and to be presented when we have full city council members all present, that they can be voted on for adoption. So as the city of Goddard grows, the demand that is put on its water and sewer infrastructure increases. This demand results in new costs associated with maintenance, construction, and management of the city sewer and water system. In order to pay for these costs, a proactive equitable solution has been drafted for discussion to review how the city could address the growing need on city services. These solutions are outlined in two parts and are displayed on the following slides. The general policy is outlined in Exhibit G.1A, and city council discussed this previously on October 4, 2021. The current city code is found in Chapter 15, Article 1, and Chapter 15, Article 2. The city council is reviewing a fee structure that will help the city offset the cost of water and sewer infrastructure. First one being a sewer plant equity fee. This part suggests charging a sewer plant equity fee in addition to the sewer connection fee to assist with the cost of expanding and maintaining the sewer treatment plant and all other related expenses. The water infrastructure equity fee, this part suggests charging a water infrastructure equity fee in addition to the water connection fee to assist with the costs of expanding and maintaining the water tower, chlorine building, water wells, and other related expenses. A city infrastructure benefit fee, in this part suggests charging a new development benefit fee to assess the potential at-large cost the city would incur for oversized and new development in anticipation of future growth. So number one, the outline is for the sewer plant equity fee. This one suggests, like as mentioned, charging it upfront, so the cost will be outlined here. It's based on land use, so first it'd be residential at 1,500, very similar to a tap fee, which would just be an additional $1,500. So our current tap fee for water is 1,500. Our current tap fee for sewer is 1,500. Would be charged an additional $1,500 upfront for the building permit when they process it. Commercial would be based on line or meter size, and as it gets bigger, the cost increases. Water is essentially the same.
So 1,500 for sewer and 1,500?
Correct. Mm-hmm. So currently, right now, we have 1,500 for a water tap, 1,500 for a sewer tap. We would be charging an additional 1,500 for a water equity fee, an additional 1,500 for a sewer equity fee. Those costs would increase depending on if it's commercial and also if the residential needed a bigger line size, we would treat it as a commercial introduction to the system. For a city infrastructure benefit fee, some of this looks familiar from before. So basically, development one is outlined here. Most of these will be adopted as specials, primary main. You have a primary sewer main, you have a lateral main, a lateral water main, a lateral sewer main. We know that development two, at some point down the road, is going to want to connect to these mains, and so the city would oversize these mains as they travel, and we would bear that cost and hold it overhead for a while until we can recapture that cost in the term of a benefit fee to the second development. And so that's kind of what the city infrastructure benefit fee is entailing, just sort of carrying an additional cost for oversizing until we can recapture it at a later time down the road when another development comes on to play. This cost, as discussed previously, would be determined by the city engineers, so it would be tailored for each development. We discussed the possibility of adopting a similar structure that Wichita had, but we decided that it would be better if we simply emulated, instead of emulating Wichita, but we did it individually based on individual needs for each development. So this is a review. City infrastructure benefit fee, assessed as specials to the future development lots for oversized and infrastructure. City will carry the cost difference until such times it can be assessed to future developments. Sewer plant equity fee, a one-time fee collected at the time of the building permit will apply to all new building permits for any development. So this means that with cloverleaf underway, we would, if this was adopted officially, we could apply it to cloverleaf building permits. We could apply it to Arbor Creek building permits, Rustic Creek building permits. And the water infrastructure equity fee is the same in that way. We'd be applying it immediately. So as soon as it's adopted and new building permits come into play, we would apply to these building permits by saying, this is your cost. You have to pay this cost upfront before you can get your building permit. And they come in and they pay the cost. We give them their inspection card, and they start building. And so this would be captured immediately, and determining how the funds are allocated would be based on how the city council and Brian and Matt felt like those funds could be managed and what fund they would be moved into.
Did go into the, either the corresponding utility fee or potentially we could do it in a reserve, but I think it's better to just put it into the utility fund.
Yes, sir.
So somebody tears an old house down in Old Town. They're already metered there, they're already hooked up to sewer. Now they're going to put up a new one. Would they be subject to the same thing since there's already the sewer and water established there?
No, not necessarily. If they're already tapped, we wouldn't necessarily consider that as an equity fee that they're going to be paying into because an equity fee and a tap fee is saying that we're introducing something to the system. This house, before it existed, when it was built, was already introduced to the system. So removing a house that's already been introduced and bringing the same house back online is like suspending the service and then reintroducing it. It would be considered waived at that point for that particular development.
Harland, typically for the benefit fee, would you go for a cost per square foot for whatever the development was? How would that typically work?
Well, I think it's a little bit.
Well, I think it's a little bit difficult to like use a per-square-foot fee like the city of Wichita does because every development related in Goddard, you know, is a little bit different, you know? There could be more costs related to a development depending on where it's located, and I think that's why, that's why I think we have to just look at those actual costs, you know? Where are we going to have to extend the main from to get water and sewer? Or lift station, or pump station, whatever? And so we have to almost look at them, I think the most equitable way is look at it on a case-by-case basis, see what those costs are, and then spread it, spread it, figure what that cost is per square foot of the development, and then spread it that way through the special assessment.
And the consensus from our October discussion of last year was that the benefit fee, since it's financing essentially infrastructure that's been prepaid, that future growth and development's tapping into, would essentially cover the cost of the at-large portion. Or, you know, if the city were to proactively lay some utility lines, or we oversized a development that was going in that was paying for their share and not covering any of the city at large, but the city at large, say, there's a four-inch water line that's required to serve a development, and we know we're going to have future growth, so we would like a 12-inch, then the city would be paying for eight inches of that 12-inch water line. And then as folks come in, that benefit fee would then be applied based upon the actual cost for that line. And how that calculation needed is derived would be the same as for any other development. Ultimately, you know, we'll defer to the city engineer's expertise in how that would be determined.
I just don't know how that works as far as you take a development like Elk Ridge. Their houses are spread out, waterways, there are not that many houses. Then you take a position like Onslow's, where they're packed together pretty tight. I mean, is Elk Ridge giving off cheap versus?
You would have to go per square foot. Their lot size would be more.
Per square foot or per lot? I mean, I mean, that, if there's $100,000 worth of improvements and there's, you know, 10 lots of large lots, you know, then they each are going to get burdened with that $10,000 each, whereas if there was 100 lots there, they're going to have to pay $1,000.
And from a benefit fee perspective, the interior portion of that subdivision is already special assessed. So the lot size would already be addressed on the internals, and we would just be determining that sanitary sewer flow or that water flow in. And so if it's 15 houses versus, you know, 50, then that would then determine that flow capacity or requirement from what they're using from that pre-positioned infrastructure that would then be accessed. So it's ultimately their flow design that the engineers use for estimating those.
And I think up there, even on Elk Ridge, I know we had a separate project for a water main extension. I don't know if they, if that was a separate petition. You know, I know they had a water improvement petition, sewer improvement petition for the internal improvements. I think there, I know there was a water main out there along Maple.
That was a separate petition.
That was a separate petition that those lots had to pick up.
And then we did oversize.
Yeah.
A portion for the new phases so that if we needed to grow along Maple.
West.
Then we could do so. And that was the city at large that covered that. But case in point, we have two of the pressurized sanitary sewer mains that are running parallel along 183rd where it, you know, Goddard's growth at that point still had not fully taken off, so they may not have been able to anticipate that maybe a larger line may have been needed. So we would have reduced the potential for running parallel lines through there and eating up right away.
Matt, when we refinanced the wastewater facility, my recollection is that there was a percentage of the bill that went to maintenance or fixing at the point that went bad, or am I dreaming that up?
We had a separate, we had a.
An O and M.
O and M line item, and we have a, you know, debt service line item. And so that, when we refinanced, we essentially lowered that debt service line item. And the O and M on the other side of that's for plant upgrades, system upgrades, system maintenance.
Why would we do a plant equity fee if each bill that we run?
Well, so think of the, think of the current, the current bill is those, those, you know, O and M, that's going towards.
Ongoing costs.
Ongoing costs.
Capital outlay expansion for, say, increasing the number of basins.
Ongoing costs at the current load on the plant. It's not taking into account what the load will be once we expand.
And the, and the purpose of this is, we know that, and I'm going to use some round numbers, so Harland, forgive me if you know the exact, but we know that our current capacity at our wastewater facility is approximately 8,500 to 10,000 population. So the intent of the equity fee is to essentially begin accruing savings so that the cost of development that is taking that capacity, we're essentially setting that aside so that we don't get into this point where we're going to have a development of, say, 100 homes. Well, that's not necessarily going to justify a $3 million basin. And so then you're kind of in this, the city at large, the rest of us that have already paid our fair share, if you will, of debt service for the wastewater facility, would then be essentially borrowing the cost of that basin expansion for new growth in addition to what we've already paid for. So that's, that's the, kind of the intent behind equity fees is, is that as we grow, you're essentially buying shares or stock or equity into that system. And so that way, you're paying once and you're done. And so those of us that have been here and are incurring essentially 40 years' worth of debt on a wastewater facility would not then be stuck with a debt service fee for an additional, you know, expansion of the basins to handle the growth.
So what's our tap fee cost?
It's 1,500 for water and 1,500 for sewer. Unless it's commercial, then it's 2,500 for water and 2,500 for sewer.
And pardon me, Mr. Mayor, we, you know, I know our city attorney's versed on this, and our bond counsel, because of the, kind of the nuances involved in this, has graciously offered to appear to answer any of the subtlety questions. So Kevin Cowan of Gilmore Bell can speak to some of the better uses of how things and what he's seen around the state with respect to equity fees. So feel free to chime in at any time, Kevin.
I was going to ask Kevin, how much rollback would you get from development?
Oh, I don't know the answer to that question. There may be others in the room that deal with it more. It's not unusual. You're not, you're sort of joining the party when you have these growth issues and back fees or equity fees and benefit fees. I know there are a number of communities, suburban communities, Wichita has its own thing going on, that have these similar types of fees. The one thing I made a note of when we were talking about the benefit fee, that's, and I think we talked about this in October, that's in the nature of a special assessment, that in this example, if Development 2 was ready to be developed at the time Development 1 was being developed, there's no doubt Development 2 would be paying special assessments. You just take care of all of it at the same time. But the thought is, they're not. And just good government and the way this is going to work best, you may have an oversized line, or you're going to run a main that you know will serve Development 1 but also Development 2. And so the benefit fee is a way to sort of reserve your right as a city to say, just because Development 2 came along later, doesn't mean they have cheaper infrastructure costs, and they will pay for their share of the line, whether it's oversizing or whether it's just sort of primary service that when we run this up there, it's going to be for Development 1, but we're also thinking about future developments. And so, and Harland touched on this a little bit, that's going to need to be thought of like a special assessment. The one limitation you have is that you can't charge a benefit fee that's greater than what they would, what Development 2 would have been assessed. So if all of that happened at the same time, Development 1, Development 2, all the main lines, you look at it and say, well, what would they have been assessed? That's, that's kind of the limit. Brian, using the example you sort of gave, if you're, if the city is saying, well, we need an eight-inch or 12-inch water line, so we'll bear the cost of the difference beyond what Development 1 needs, that sort of, by definition, sets, I think, kind of the maximum. But we're saying, well, Development 2, if you were coming on board right now, the difference between these two lines would be your cost. You're, we have to have this line because you're going to get service from it. City at large is going to cover it for now, but you're going to pay us back with a benefit fee in the future. And that was the other thing I wanted to mention, that if, if there's a city at large component, the benefit fee can be used to repay the city's share of the cost and replenish the bonded interest fund. So you've had debt service over a number of years covering that cost of kind of future development, then the benefit fees come in and you replenish that. If you didn't have a city at large component for whatever reason, maybe the only way you can run the mains up there, it's just going to be something that would be assessed and not a city at large component. So Development 1 says, we'll pay 100% of the cost, we have to, that's the only way we can get our service. Then if somebody, if Development 2 comes along later, there's no city at large component to repay, then that benefit fee can still be charged, but it then gets applied to reduce special assessments for Development 1 over the period of time remaining. So one way or the other, either the city at large is going to get made whole because it's been covering that cost differential, and Development 2's going to get the benefit of those main lines, or Development 1's been covering all of those costs, and the statute says if that's going on, you collect that benefit fee and you reduce the assessments that have been paid. So now that's benefit fee, which I think in some respects is a little, a little more certain and scientific. It's sort of the statute that says this is how you do it, and it is for a specific improvement. Some of the equity fees are more about trying to look into the future and making determinations as we add all of this growth. What do we need to think about and maybe collect to start planning for what it's going to cost to deal with the growth?
My question, and this is just like very general, let's say Development 1's happening now or is wanting to happen now, but not only is the cost expensive with the size of the main, but how far you drag it, how many feature drag it is. And so Development 1 is happening in the next year, and let's say hypothetically Development 2, just, you know, a quarter section away, is going to happen in the next three years. So Development 1, what type of costs are they bearing upfront? Are they bearing up most of the costs upfront and then they get? See, this is.
Good question.
This is what makes it difficult for the initial developer, you know?
Right. And that's, that's why we try and say, you know, we determine what their base load is, and if they need to be serviced by a four-inch pressurized main, then they lay the four-inch pressurized main. Now, if, because of how pressurized mains work, Development 2 comes in, then they can connect in. Now, Development 2 is paying their benefit fee for that, and it also helps Development 2 because whether it's a water line or a sewer line, they're not running a parallel line from essentially the lift station source or the water main source. Because if we, we currently kind of already do this anyway, with the exception of, like I said, along 183rd, and Harland may understand this, I mean, he does understand it better than, than most of us as he designs it. So he's our expert on that in the room. But the point is, is we're trying to avoid having three, four-inch lines and then nobody can fire flow because you've got a four-inch line on a 3,000-square-foot house. And so the fire department can't flow enough. Or having, like I said, oversized in an eight or a 12-inch where we know we're going to have some future growth down the road, and when that occurs, Development 1's paying only their share, and then Development 2 would be paying that benefit fee to connect in for their share.
But I do.
But it's basically the city at large is going to pay for the oversize and then get paid back.
Yeah.
I would mention too that, one thing that's a benefit to the city but also to Development 2, is you have to take into account the net present value of the dollar. If the city puts this infrastructure in now, and we say that this development's going to pay for the cost, the equal cost of this development, this portion of the infrastructure, we are essentially taking that overhead and we're locking it in place, that dollar amount we're locking it in place in time. Or imagine if we just did this part, waited five years, and then Development 2 came along, this portion of the cost of the infrastructure, excuse me, would be higher down the road because the dollar today is going to be less than the dollar, it's going to be more than the dollar tomorrow. So this, let's say that this cost a million dollars to put in, and we're going to charge $500,000 to this development down the road. If we didn't do that, and then this development went in five years later, they could be charging $700,000 to put in this infrastructure.
It's to prevent another Harbor Creek thing.
And, and also, think about it, let's assume Development 1 is going in first, but let's, let's, for exploring the creative space here, assume that the water or sewer supply is coming past Development 2, that's going to be undeveloped while Development 1 is being constructed. Because we already know, we have developers approaching us where we kind of have these voids, and they want to develop on the outskirts, which is strategically beneficial to the city oftentimes, especially when we look to the east and know that we share a common boundary with Wichita. Then that's where that benefit of getting the lines out to Development 1, but having it sufficiently sized so that we can infill and create more users, add density, which as we know, kind of gets this positive inertia rolling to where then that helps us as well to develop the commercial properties and the quality of life that everyone wants in our community.
That, that is a really good point, and it's been a while, but when this statute was enacted, one of, one group of proponents were school districts. And you see this a lot, and you may have seen it here in Goddard, where we're going to build our school, and we need water and sewer, and it may be a mile or two sort of from the edge of the city, so you're running all that infrastructure, and there's a pretty good chance there's going to be a lot of infill once you build a new school and housing is added. And the school districts were saying, we, we need this service. I guess we'll pay for it, but we know there are going to be, you know, duplexes and houses that are going to tap into those mains. I mean, this is step one to the next development because they have a great new school, and I think that's really a good point, that if you think about it going the other direction, whether it's Development 1, or a school, or something else, and you know you're going to run these mains past an area that's going to infill and tap into those, is just another way to think about it. And Mayor, back to your question about, it's sort of a negotiation, like how are you going to determine what they pay Development 1? And I don't have a good answer, I'm sure Harland probably has some thoughts, but it's, you could approach it like, well, look, to get you the bare minimum of service just for you, this is what have we cost, so we think you should at least pay that. We don't want to do that as a city because it's, it's bad government, we're just going to be piecemealing it here and there. What really needs to be done is the 12-inch main, and so, you know, you're not paying for the 12-inch main, you're paying sort of what you would have paid just to have some sort of an extension to only serve you. And I don't know what that number is, but I.
How do we calculate that?
Well, I was just going to throw in, you know, we, we know that the minimum sewer requirement is an eight-inch. So they couldn't put a two- requirement is an eight inch. So they couldn't put a two inch line in because they say, hey, all our development need is, is a two inch line. For gravity purposes, flow per, it has to be a minimum of eight inch. So in most cases, you know, an eight inch will, will carry most of development, but if we know it's perhaps going to go past this development out to development two, and by the time we pick up all the lots in development two, we know we need a 10 or 12 inch, then obviously that incremental cost, I guess that's something that I guess is in the city ordinances. It says the city will pick that up, but then this gives you a vehicle for recouping some of that cost for that oversizing. And similar with water, while yes, you could, six inch could be your minimum, in most cases, an eight inch water line is our minimum if we're going to extend out to development.
Are we calculating the length as well with this cost sharing deal, as much as the size?
Certainly.
Because I'm in the pipe business and-
Right.
Size and length go hand in hand.
Right. Yeah. Directly related to size and length.
Okay.
Right. Size drives the unit price, the per foot price. Length then gets taken times the unit price to determine overall cost.
But based on what Harland was saying, I could see a situation, and I'm not sure you're going to be able to codify it and say, this is how it's going to be calculated every single time. It would be, look, you have to have an eight inch line to serve you. It would cost, and maybe it's a thousand feet of it. That's what it would cost. We at the city don't want to do that. We don't want it to be a 12 inch line because we want to go past you and think about the next development. So maybe it's the difference between eight and 12 inch, and then that length, maybe it's another thousand feet wherever you're going to go to get to that next development.
So let's say rewind a few years, cloverleaf before it got developed. They tapped just straight in, they didn't stretch them utility. So let's say we had this in place before cloverleaf happened. Where would all that money go?
Well, and that was, cloverleaf is, is maybe, it's a good thought, but when that road and those water mains were extended, that was done by special assessment petition by the property owner. Yeah. So it wasn't, we didn't proactively position that.
But if, if the question is, it was there and a development paid for it, and then it was sufficiently sized and constructed that another development could tap into it-
Right.
Then that's kind of the example I gave earlier where there's no city at large component. So if they paid a benefit fee, and by all rights, you could argue they should have, somebody else paid for that, then to the extent they're paying it, it would go to reduce special assessments. Now if-
The, the-
Yes.
Previous phases?
Yes. Now, if, the weakness of that, I don't know how you get around this, it's much easier if you have a city at large component because there's no time limit on that. But if it's, look, we built this and we have a development paying for it by statute, that's limited to 20 years of special assessment. So if somebody tapped into that, you know, in year 25, and gets the benefit of that infrastructure that somebody else paid for, there's no, no place to apply that benefit fee under the statute because you can't reduce the special assessments that have already been paid. So the hope would be, in that sort of situation, maybe it's in year 12, and you could say, you know, you only need to pay a benefit fee, and so for the next eight years, we're going to use your benefit fee to reduce what the others have, would have been paying for the last eight years of their 20 year specials.
So I'm adding up with the equity fee, it's 3,000. We have a tap fee, that's another 3,000 per lot. And then, who knows what the benefit fee is? It varies from development to development. But let's just say 7,500 total. Is that pricing ourselves out of market, do you think, Harland? Compared to the-
I think that's more of maybe a real estate type question, a realtor type question. I'm not sure. I don't know what lots are selling for, quite honestly. I mean, 20 and 30,000, but I, I don't know.
What are the-
What are lots selling for in these developments around here? Do you know, Micah?
It varies on the, the development, honestly. I think-
40,000, 50,000?
Cloverleaf probably 30 to 40. I think Arbor is higher than that. And I don't know what Rustic Creek is going for right now. It hasn't really opened up yet, so I couldn't really say. I don't, I don't know if that would really price us out of the market. Typically, what I see is that people want to move to Goddard for the school district predominantly. They don't really look at necessarily the, the specials cost or the building permit cost. I, normally people just look at it in terms of general safety, local amenities, and quality of the school district. That's how people typically choose a school, a municipality, and a close proximity to jobs. That's typically how people would look for.
And other sub, other suburbs that are first tier already have these fees on the books. We're kind of joining the party a little late, but I know there's also some that are looking to refine and tweak as they've kind of experienced. I mean, because there's no, you're, you're not able to craft a one size fits all because there's so many-
Right, there is.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, that's what I was going to ask Kevin. I mean, so there's not going to be a problem. I mean, every development, cost of development's going to be a little different to each of these. Is there, there's no legal problem in, is there a, I guess I was thinking maybe that's why the city, the big, big guy set on, you know, that .065 per square foot, because then they assume we'll just absorb anything over that. I mean, I guess we're, we have enough revenues. But in a small city-
Yeah. Well, so on the benefit fee, it, it's going to be what it is.
Right.
I mean, it's cost based, and somebody's going to get assessed, and somebody's going to pay a, a benefit fee. On the equity fee, you're right.
That's going to be even across the board.
It's, yeah.
Per lot.
And we all have talked some about this. It's, it's hard to project into the future. If we add these sorts of businesses and these sorts of developments, what sort of impact or equity fee would we like to get and cover certain amounts of costs? And you're never going to be able to pinpoint that. And I don't, Wichita's per square foot. I think you're right. It's like, this is something we're comfortable with. We know it's going to generate a good amount. We, I doubt it's ever going to, or ever going to cover the cost of whatever expansion. And I suspect your equity fee will be the, the same. It's just, you'd like for it to, to provide some equity when we have to go do this. We don't know what it's going to cost in 10 years, but we think if this is what the fee is, it's going to cover a portion of the cost and make it a little more-
Three to five years ago, we did a tap fee review, and I want to say the average tap fee was 3,000 to 3,500. And we, we were about half that cost.
Independently, water and sewers? We doubted waters, we doubted sewer?
Yes. So we would be on par to that ballpark with what the going rate was for a tap fee.
How difficult would it be to try to get some comps, I guess, for maybe others like Derby or, I don't know, Bay?
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be that difficult.
Because I don't want prices out of the market, but I also want to be able to think 10 years ahead for the city, you know, when we're all, all we have gone now, but we got something in place where we just follow every time.
And, and to kind of help soften that blow, one of the things that I know we explored at one point in a workshop was, or at least I think that's, that's when it was discussed, was the admin fee for the debt issuances on the temp notes and then the permanent financing at the 5% that we could essentially by resolution or, you know, essentially policy dictate, that we could utilize that to offset some of, of these associated costs and, and reduce the city's risk at large. And maybe you could kind of walk this through that.
Yeah. So, and it's been a couple of years since we've gone through an assessment process, but to go through that process, you total up all the project costs. What have you paid? Engineers, contractors, temporary note interest, everything that, that went into that process to finance and construct something. By statute, and it's very specific, you as a city can charge on top of that a 5% administrative fee. So let's say the total of all the infrastructure costs is a million dollars. You could say, we're going to charge 5% to $50,000 as an administrative fee on all. And, and there are cities that do that, definitely do that. That's just part of their thing. I think the idea is, it's a lot of work for city staff to, to be dealing with special assessments and all of these projects, and this is a way to offset that. But we did discuss, if you wanted to start just as a policy matter, maybe, you know, Harland's working on estimated costs that, hey, we're also going to add a 5% administrative fee, just like the statute provides. That would be over and above everything it takes to finance, pay the project costs, and temporary note interest, and all of that. And then that administrative fee, you could apply however you want. I mean, I suppose the thought would be, we've had a bunch of people working on this here at City Hall for the last few years, and, and we pay their salaries, and so this helps us fund some of that. I don't know if you put it in a separate fund, if you say, well, that's just going to go to the general fund to sort of cover all these things that we've been paying for over the last few years. But that, that also is another option, and it is very explicit by statute that you have that right to just say, or it's 5% administrative to deal with all this new project special assessment stuff. And, and so, yeah. And that's not anything we've talked about with any of this. It would be separate from it and just part of special assessment projects.
And I'll tell you that when, when any of the consultants that are coming in figuring, you know, yes, you have your construction cost estimate, for the purposes of preparing the petition cost, you, you put in a, an inflation factor to cover their design, the city's inspection, bond, or make a number for bonding costs. So there is a, there's already a percentage, I think, in there, whether you've been collecting that.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. It's probably in an estimate.
In, in that petition estimate.
Been using.
So the city, since they've got time and effort in it, they, they should be retaining a percentage there, just to cover your staff costs, I think.
Basically, the city at large is preparing that, that cost versus the development. It's one again. You know, it's, it's always a fine line where you want to be competitive, you want to, you want to have an environment where builders and developers want to go to because it's easy to work with, but you also don't want to sell ourselves short at the same time. And so, you know, I, I was, toss the idea around of having a fee, and I know Brian has spoken with you, Kevin, about like a future fee almost, where they pay a fee, if they were to tap into existing infrastructure, that it goes into a war chest for the city, that you then later, if you have to drag a bunch of water and sewer mains somewhere, then you use those funds out of a war chest to drag that out. But it doesn't, I don't know if we're able to do that.
Well, I think the 5% could be that.
The 5%?
Yeah, if you're thinking, well, we don't need to go backwards.
Is that more like an impact fee?
An impact?
I think so.
I mean, that's another, but we don't-
The equity and impact terminology, I have just viewed those as the same.
The fees, Mike, is going, like, even if they did have access, like cloverleaf were to pay, it would pay back.
For the oversight.
Yeah, that's for a very specific project that already exists.
Right. The equity fees, the floor, you're talking about. Well, that's, that equity fee, that's only going towards, for expansion of the wastewater treatment, so.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be specific to sewer or water. The 5% that we've talked about could go to a war chest and say, this is, you know, our Goddard Development Fund that can be used for a number of different things. It could be used for infrastructure, for new development, could be used for other things.
But the equity fee, we could, those funds, we could use to drag water and sewer somewhere else. Generally, no. Generally, no. I mean, the equity fee is probably, it's smart because we, I mean, Mikey, you said in our last meeting that maybe we're going to double in size in the next 10 years, or, you know. So we got to think ahead there as well. But how, so we're not holding a whole bunch of debt on the city. How do we think ahead when these developments will happen?
And that's what the equity fee's intended to do, for the, whether it's a water tower, or it's, you know, chlorine station, or, you know, water treatment, or it's a sanitary sewer basin expansion at our existing plant for the growth. And so that's the whole intent of that is to-
What about water station?
Yeah, well, that, I was going to add, one of the, I don't know if it's a weakness of the equity fee, there has to be a nexus, a connection to, I'm paying it, this is my development, but it's going to be used for a plant. That's, you know, I'm, I'm causing a need for a plant expansion. If it was, well, I'm paying this equity or impact fee, and then I find out it's used to run a sewer line somewhere else that's not to my development, then I think you lose that connection that you need to have. And so, that's why I, it's easier to think in terms of, the impact fee's going to be kind of a city at large, this new development is causing some needs that, that apply to the benefit of that development, but sort of more generally like a plant or something, and not specifically for another area of development. And I think that's where we have to be, be worried. But again, I think the 5%, and that's, I don't know that that would build up as quickly as, as the impact fee, but I think that could be more-
But it would be something.
Yeah.
I think you're, I think you're talking about a couple of different war chests there. I mean, with the 5%, you know, that would be an unrestricted war chest that you could use for, essentially whatever you decide you want to use it for. The equity fee would be building up a war chest that is more limited in what you can do with it, but it's to develop that war chest, that down payment, so that when you do have big infrastructure expenses associated with, with the wastewater treatment plant, the city's water and sewer needs, you've got that money sitting there available to use. And you don't have to pass that expense on to the city at large.
So can we put in verbiage with this administrative fee, this 5% fee, where when we're all gone and someone sees 200 grand land they have, they want to go build a new statue, they want to blow it all off? You know, how do we, could we put some verbiage in that? Or is that pretty much whatever they want?
To restrict the 5%?
The 5% where we say, we only want it to go for these that. Could we do that? No.
I don't think so.
Yeah, the closest I think we could do is, is by essentially administrative, like a policy. But the problem with the policy is, if we say it's going for, you know, the public portion of the oversize, so we don't have to have any P and I charges, and then somebody else comes along 10 years later and they want to build the statue, they can change the policy.
Yeah, I think, I think that to try and tie a future cost against probably by the cash basis.
I think that in Georgia, that will probably be used for staff anyway, wouldn't it? You don't have that 5%.
The 5%?
Yeah.
I mean, it helps to offset the city's sunk cost in providing those services.
It's costly. You wouldn't have to pay, figure out the mill, whether you pay for the staff time and that.
Yeah, or maybe, you know, the funds are used to, you know, increase staffing, increase services, whatever. I mean, I, I think there's a whole flurry of different ways in which you could use that. I mean, I, I mean, I think about it in the context of, for large commercial loan transactions, borrower goes to the bank, wants to borrow $5 million for some big development. And oftentimes, the bank will go hire its own lawyers to review that transaction, to prepare the paperwork, make sure that, you know, the paperwork is legitimate, that the mortgage, you know, says what it's supposed to say, that the bank's protected. And the bank's going to pass on the attorney's fees that they incur to do that transaction. The borrower's going to pay it. Now, the bank is the one incurring the expense. It's to protect the bank, but ultimately it's for the benefit of the borrower so that the borrower can borrow, borrow that money from the bank.
And our staffing and salaries will grow as the city-
Right.
I mean, we, we're going to make property, you know, we benefit off the property itself. That's kind of the business we're in. So if, we're only going to do a ben, a 5% fee just to say we're paying, so that development itself is going to help offset those costs. itself is going to help offset those costs in and of itself.
But that, that helps the time they spend getting that ready.
That time is gonna be accrued anyways.
They could have done, they, they could have done something else with their time.
Well, it's what we direct them to do. If we want them to focus on development, and that, or if we want them to focus on at par, that's what we're focusing their attention on. I mean, a 5% fee, I don't know if that's kind of right for bank for anybody, though.
Yeah, as Harland said, it's probably within the estimates.
And, and that's what your biggest neighbor to the east is exactly doing.
Yep. And it, I mean, you're essentially shifting that cost from the city at large and putting it more on the parcels that we're gonna benefit from.
And I think that makes a lot of sense, because the city hasn't been growing at a rate where the at-large, I think, some of the smaller costs falling on at-large hasn't really had much of an impact, but if we're gonna double in the next few years, more or less, then, and that becomes a really...
Maybe I've heard that.
I mean, whatever.
I still only run with it.
Okay, fine. But it is gonna pick up to a level where it's only gonna increase the burden on the city at large.
Yeah, I feel, so general projections for population growth, you can generally calculate it based on compound interest. And so, when we, when we calculated the American Community Surveys, existing 2010 Population for Goddard, and we projected it every five years at a 1.5% increase, we landed at 5088. And then when the 2020 census came out, it was at 5084. So we were only off by four people with our, with our calculation. And it wasn't bad. And so, you can take that and project it into the future, and just simply say that we're gonna be growing by 1.5% every year, and then what would that look like into the future? And so, on a more liberal estimate, yes, we could double in size and be at 10,000 by 2030. And a more conservative estimate says that we'd be at 6,900.
Because then we have another cost that we, in certain areas of the city's growth pattern, that we have to do with little water. And we might have a fee there as well, on top of all of this, that we're gonna have to possibly approve. And so, I think what would be interesting in the next meeting that we have is maybe trying to compare what some of the surrounding communities are doing, and see if we're lower or higher, or where we can go from there. Is that all right with you guys?
Yeah, I think we need to get something rolling, because right now, we have nothing, nothing to give guidance and direction, and new developments coming in, and they got to the bank.
And Micah can probably attest, you get asked for the move every time somebody comes in.
Or they'll stand there and tell you that you can do something that's contradictory to the statute, and staff says you can't, and they say you can, and it's just awkward.
I think we need to step up, step up, or what we're gonna do. Well, there's two ways of it, so that our staff has something that they can lay out and say, this is what we're, this is how we're gonna do it.
Just a textbook, what we do every time. Yeah. Well, is getting comparisons okay with you guys? Trying to see what's good with, what they do with surrounding areas? Trying to see if we're comparable?
It's fine with me. I mean, it's fun to look at, is it necessary?
Yeah, I think, you know, right now, I mean, with the low everybody, from what I'm hearing, as far as the...
We don't know if we're low.
Yeah, that was based on several years back.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll get fresh numbers for you at the next council meeting. We'll also have the draft ordinances that if you wanted to act on, in their finished form or as presented, you could do so at the next meeting. Because we do have so much development and growth queued up, and stuff on the back burner that should be moving forward, that we, we could potentially, you know, squander a wonderful opportunity to make sure that, that growth is not in any way hampering the, you know, subsequent growth in and around its area with the infrastructure size, and also making sure that we're taking care of our neighbors that chose Goddard before we were really, you know, picking up even more positive momentum than what we already had over the past decade, so that the new development is incurring its cost, no more than its share, but at the same time, the folks that are already here aren't having to, you know, pay additional debt service fees for the new residents.
I think you can assume that most growing communities charge 5% administrative. That's my experience. I mean, that might be the low-hanging fruit, as you're thinking about, like, what, what can we do differently? Have you just decided in the coming weeks, well, that's something we're gonna start doing immediately? That's...
And I think that's just a matter of collecting it, because it's already being figured into the petition amounts.
Well, yeah, it's, I mentioned how we calculate total costs, and we're going to divide that and reach assessments, and there, there's temporary note interest, there's bond costs of issuance, you can just start including administrative fee, and that just becomes part of the total cost that is used to size the bond issue.
So you're saying, you have a line of...
Well, it's, when you take the construction, whenever, whenever they figure a petition cost, they take the construction cost, and they use a 0.35 multiplication factor.
It's like administrative finance.
Yeah, and their design, there's inspection, and, and their contingencies. So it's already, it's not like that's gonna be a cost increase to the, these estimates for, for the improvements. It, it's already been figured by every consultant that comes to town.
All righty. Is that good with you guys?
Yep.
All right. Moving on to the next item. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Bill.
So, I'm the mayor and city council. This is item H2. This is the industrial district modification. So during 2020 and 2021, the planning commission had discussed market changes that have occurred both recently and the past. These market changes can occasionally run at odds with the zoning classification that they abide with. And from time to time, the zoning classification should be reviewed for amendments to allow for market changes and capitalization on growth trends, both locally and nationally. Planning Commission approved the changes to the I-1 zoning classification on February 14th, 2022. If it is approved by city council, it will become finalized 30 days after publication in the city newspaper. So you probably remember, there was a lady in here, Jennifer Walk, she came in and presented herself before city council, and she presented herself before planning commission, and she was saying, basically, she was looking around for a building, and the only one she could really find was in the industrial district. And she was hoping that planning commission and both city council would consider opening up the industrial district a little bit more to allow that land use that she was proposing in the industrial district, so that she could buy that building and move into it. And so, that's kind of what we are seeing here. This modification to the industrial district would include that land use that Mrs. Walk was proposing, as well as other land uses. It's already gone through the planning commission. Green was added, red was removed, and black has stayed the same. So this is verbatim, and then, like I said, these colors will help kind of stand out, let you know what's been added, or removed, or proposed, or changed. So, introduction, so this district is designed for light industrial uses, which do not require a large amount of land, generate modest amounts of traffic, are consistent with the capacity and availability of public and private services, create limited environmental problems in the way of odor, smoke, dust, glare, vibration, or sounds, and do not permit the intermixing of residential uses. So this is gonna stay the same. And then we've added, this district will additionally serve as a business incubator for transitional small businesses, and allow for the co-ming live low to medium intensity land uses. So permitted uses, 1 through 16 has not changed. We've left that part exactly as is. 7 through 24 has not changed. We've left that as is. We've added dog kennels, including outside runs, large recycling collection centers, bulk storage for retail, wholesale distribution, retail shops, offices and service businesses such as repair and watches, jewelry, shoes, office machines, appliances, et cetera, physical therapy, personal gyms, chiropractic, and other personal services, boat and RV storages, and slaughterhouses. We marked that as purple because the question came up with planning commission slaughterhouses versus stockyards. And then the mention of liberal Kansas came up, that apparently, stockyards can be very detrimental to the overall surrounding area. And so, that question was, should we allow slaughterhouses or stockyards in an industrial district? And so, the planning commission felt that slaughterhouses would be considered acceptable, but stockyards were not considered acceptable, and that they felt that it should be a completely separate zoning classification entirely, one that requires a large amount of land and significant buffers and things of that nature. So they decided that slaughterhouses would be considered acceptable on that one. Use is not permitted. This is stating the same, all, all of it is stating the same, except that we have left stockyards in there. Notice residential uses as well, we're specifically saying that's not gonna be accepted. Special uses, so public buildings, asphalt, concrete, so these are all things that would special use be brought before planning commission, it has to get published, and it goes before planning commission and then city council, very similar to a rezoning. We marked off recycling processing centers, because that was considered acceptable under permitted uses. And then over here on section 4106A, we marked that out, because we are allowing businesses, industrial uses, as service convenience to employees that are out for retail service This has not changed, so these are the lot size requirements and bulk regulations, we haven't changed anything on this one. Use limitations, so no building shall be used for residential purposes to existing residence, which is illegal, non-conforming use. We left that as is. And then we put, we marked out outdoor operations, display and storage is permitted, which is a relative related activity, the principal use is accepted, only parking and display areas for new products only are permitted in minimum front yard setback. We marked that out because of the concept that was generated, was this idea of a First Friday environment, where you could have consignment shops that are open, and you have display of goods and wares during certain times of the day, and then people could come and go as they please. And so, the idea of limiting it only to the front as opposed to the side seems somewhat counterintuitive in that regard, so we marked it out. Planning Commission considered that acceptable. Then number three, there shall be no emission of dust, noise, odor, vibration, which shall be detectable as a nuisance beyond the lot line. Wasn't really sure how that could actually be enforced, because if you actually stood in the property line, and you could hear sound, then that could be considered a violation of that use limitation. And so, we thought that it made more sense to actually say that businesses that generate noise, dust, or odor, that is noticeable beyond the lot line, shall do everything reasonably possible to mitigate the noise, dust, or odor, so that way, that actually puts the onus back on the property owner and say, you're not in direct violation, but we need to actually have addressed this situation, as opposed to it being completely prohibited as a, as a use limitation, so. Small publication costs per state law, legally approved as a form. It is recommended that city council waive the reading of the ordinance with a motion, and then approve the ordinance for the rezoning text amendment for I-1 industrial district, including any additional changes discussed during the regular city council meeting, that would be a motion and a roll call, so.
And this doesn't affect Strut's?
No, this doesn't affect Strut's. No, Strut's is a, Strut's is on the central business district, it's not in the industrial district, so it's, it's in the central business district, which is from Santa Fe to Third. It's considered a grandfathered use, which is kind of a little bit different. And as you're aware, we sold the lot to, to Strut's for the addition of their building. All of the slaughtering operation is gonna be on the existing lot that they have currently, which is the grandfathered use. And then the further rendering of the meat, the breaking down into steaks and ribs and everything else, will be on the lot that was sold to them, which is considered an acceptable use in the central business district. But technically speaking, if Strut's were to leave the city, if it couldn't function anymore on the grandfathered use, it really would have nowhere else to go in the city. It was prohibited in pretty much every other zoning classification, so the introduction of the slaughterhouse into the industrial district actually would allow Strut's to move into the industrial district if they chose. But right now, if they wanted to sell the building they were currently in and move somewhere else in the city, they couldn't. No other zoning classification will allow for a Strut's, so.
What was the reasoning for moving recycling from special use to acceptable?
Well, generally, their MPC recycling is there right now. I don't consider them a large recycling use, but the classification of large recycling is under 102.
So there is a recycling center?
There is. MPC recycling is there currently, but it's considered a, a low intensity use, and so we decided that if there was gonna be a larger intensity use in that area, generally, it would be considered acceptable. But if, if that was a concern by the city council, then we could strike that out and say that a lower, a medium use could be acceptable, and then we would just consider that one that was added.
Is there a noise level that is unacceptable in this?
It's not really defined. It just simply says that it's in, that it's not acceptable if you can hear past the lot line. But I, I figure if you could stand at a lot line, and you could hear the noise, it seems somewhat kind of, how would that actually be enforceable?
Somebody came in there and had this very big bragger or something like that, like if you're sitting there screaming.
Right, well, that'd be something that'd be considered during the land use qualification of the actual policy. So if somebody was to say, we're gonna submit a building permit, or if somebody says that we want to buy this lot, and we would ask them, well, what's the use? And they say, we're doing it for grinding, or the breaking down of asphalt or something along those lines, then that would, that would actually have to come up and be disclosed, but...
That already goes on a no lock. I mean, like, I, I worked there when I was a kid, and they have a whole weld shop for pipe piping and rimming tools, all kinds, I mean, they already do all that stuff, you just, you know, nobody hears it, because it's in the shop, and...
Well, I'm just saying, if you can hear 30, 4 blocks away, there's, there's sometimes, I can hear something over the industrial park at 9 o'clock at night, I don't know where it is or where it's coming from. It's loud.
That might, that might be a little bit difficult to manage, but I mean, I guess we could ask them what they're, obviously, when they're coming in and they're saying that this is the type of land use we want to present in that industrial district, we could ask them, is there gonna be a lot of noise generation? But typically, they'll probably, lower, they'll probably say, it's not gonna be very noise-inducing, and then they'll move in, and then we find out it is noise-inducing, and then we'd have to say, well, that's a violation of number three for a use limitation, and then we would have to go back to them and say, you have to mitigate this in some way, if it's severe.
And we have additional noise ordinance?
Right, and there's the, there's a sound ordinance that we require.
Qualified, or just the general noises? And I think the, was it the boat factory, or the, what, what do they call, the new one going in, with the, kind of the impetus for this?
Oh, yes, mhm.
Uh, they're just gonna, they're...
Well, maybe just move in and start grinding, grinding up concrete or something like that, or...
That'd kind of ruin your day, too, a little. Okay, well, do you guys want to waive the reading?
I'll motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Motion by Michael, second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion and a roll call.
All...
Motion to approve the ordinance. Motion by Brent. All right. Second, second by Larry. Roll call.
Cuts member Zimmerman. Mayor Locken.
Yes.
Cuts member Traylor.
Yes.
Cuts member Proctor.
Yes.
That will be ordinance 884.
Thank you very much. This is gonna be item H.3. This is the Goddard Lions Club Car Show Sound Waiver. So quick background, the Goddard Lions Club would like to host the car show on April 2nd or 3rd, depending on weather, in the main street of Goddard between the hours of 12 and 4:00. They have submitted a special event permit and a road closure permit to host this event, along with all necessary documents, including liability insurance. The original approval was for times of 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., and will close the main street from Santa Fe to First Avenue. The new revised request would be from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m., and will close the main street from Santa Fe to Second Avenue. The event will have amplified sound with music announcements that would be audible 150 feet away, and will require a sound waiver to be approved by the city council. The previous waiver included the times of 3:00 to 7:00. As such, a new waiver would need to be published listing the new times of 12:00 to 4:00. Current regulations found in code of city Goddard, Chapter 11, Article 13, loud noises in city councils considered waiving the sound ordinance as it pertains to amplified sound. It's probably familiar from the February meeting. Goddard Lions Club has reached out to roadster owner, Mr. Jeff Brought, if I'm pronouncing that wrong, I apologize, who lives in Wichita to attend the show. Jeff owns a roadster named Lucille, which won the Most Beautiful Roadster Award in 2022 in Pomona, California. Jeff has agreed to attend the event with Lucille, but due to time constraints, could only be available from 12:00 to 4:00. Lions Club is asking for change to host the roadster in the car show. There's the roadster, Lucille. And this is the new closure that's being proposed, so they'll from Santa Fe. So Santa Fe will stay open, but they'll close it heading north south Main, First and Second will be closed, and this is where Lucille will be hosted, and everyone else will be on, on Main Street.
Santa Fe would be closed.
Okay, so we'd be closing Santa Fe as well.
Because there's activities at Tullinger Park.
Ah, okay. Santa Fe would also be closed.
Are we aware if the hair salon will have parking?
I've already talked to them, and I'm supposed to get back to them tomorrow. I'm assuring them that they can get parking for them. I've gone through each of the businesses.
Thank you, Dan.
Small publication costs, and legally approved as the form. It is recommended city council waive the reading of the ordinance, improve the revised waiver for the sound ordinance for the Goddard Lions Club Car Show, and amend the road closure to... to include twelve. Second Avenue and time change from three to seven P M to twelve to four P M with a motion and a roll call.
Who created the, the closure, Matt?
I didn't.
Where the barricades are?
I didn't.
Can we go back to that?
Yeah.
Up there on second, can the barricade actually close off Main Street instead of closing off Second Street?
We're going to close off sec, Main Street north of Second Street.
Why north of it?
Because we have, my understanding is we may have vendors on that lot up there where his pointer is. If we do not, we will close it off before Second Street. So the Second Street travel is available. You never know when you will have, what the participation would be. We're parking on both sides of the street and in the middle. I can't imagine it going that far, but with this attraction, you don't know what's going to happen. And Amanda, I would like to introduce two people here, Amanda and Greg Credwell. When you put somebody in charge, you let them answer the questions? And they were the ones that got Lucille? So I would like you to have Amanda talk to you about it.
Or Greg can, you can tell where Lucille's going to be and what. The reason Joey Veranna has volunteered his building because that was the only way we could get him was put him inside a building to, it's a five hundred thousand dollar car. And, and Goddard is going to be the only car show that will host this car show for a year. So it's an exclusive opportunity, a big deal. So he's going to be in that building behind Joey's, Joey's office. So, and Joey's also given us access to that field if we needed that he owns right there. So that's why we would like to have just that part because it only affects Joey's property. That blockade just moved it back a little bit. So people are going to come in between the library and Joey's building through a line and they're going to exit out the back and come around the side. So that's why we were trying to protect everybody that's coming out in that area.
Do we have any problem with this? People are going to follow the direction of a detour.
You want to block Santa Fe as well and Main Street prior to Santa Fe? Is that correct?
My understanding, and if I'm wrong, Amanda is correcting, that there is activities in Linear Park building. So we'd like to move this down to here and block these both here for that reason, to allow pedestrian traffic to get over to here.
If you move it down on the south side of Santa Fe, you might as well move it all the way down to that residence that sits directly north of South Street. But then you have the problem of people turning around in their driveway or people turning around on Main Street. But that's just something to think about.
Is it possible to just close the western portion of Santa Fe?
The western portion or the eastern portion?
The west, essentially to give folks a through?
If you close this here so they can travel over here, I understand what you're saying. You're going to leave this open here. Is that what you're saying, Brian?
Just so they, yeah, so that they have a, a way to.
A way to get back into here.
Yes.
If I see that, no problem. I didn't see this map before it presented to council, so. Did it work out for you, sir? Better?
Me? It's just going to require quite a few barricades.
I'm aware of this. I'm paying attention.
The idea was to keep, you know, this is, we're keeping it a family event. We're a family oriented town, but these are, it's a car show. So we wanted to have kid activities towards the parks so they could use the park. It's going to be April, so bounce houses, use the pavilion for, you know, their kind of model car show of their own. So that's the whole point was to figure out how we can leverage Linear Park to keep the kids safe to where parents can enjoy the car show, but the kids can also be occupied.
To do that, I think you need to bring those barricades down past the trail crossing just north of that residence that sits south of South Street. So that way pedestrians can cross Main Street safely. Then you'll also need the barricade off Santa Fe, probably at the.
At Cedar?
Well, if you block it off at Cedar, then people can't park on all of those parking stalls or the handicap stalls there next to the pavilion.
But if there's a lot of pedestrian, I'm trying to figure this out. Because usually if there's pedestrian traffic, it's blocked, so.
Yeah. It could be blocked at the alley, but.
Are you bringing food trucks or anything in?
There's no food trucks. The only thing trucks or spending we're going to have is in the community center or outside the community center. There is one.
Meatstuffs will probably be there because the non-competing food truck with the Lions Club fundraiser. And then maybe like a pineapple drink truck or something like that, but it's not open to a lot of food trucks.
No, that's why, because then.
Kind of like Amanda said, we're trying to keep the kids away from all the cars because the kids don't need to be around all the show cars that we're trying to bring in because we're trying to bring in a lot of high quality cars to come to the show. So we're trying to keep the kids down south away from all the cars and give them all the activities that the.
And this is our first standalone event. In the past, it's been combined with the fall festivals. So this is our first standalone, so we wanted it to be more than just a car show. So that way it'd be a family oriented event. And the, the snow cone place will be open so she can sell snow cones. You know, she's right by the park, which is also where the kids are, you know, right on the corner of the street. So however you guys want to block it off based upon where we would like to use it safely, like we're, we're open to that. We just wanted to be able to use, we've got Lucille on one end and we've got the kids on another end and we have all the cars in between.
And they got work lanes?
Yeah.
The kids will love it, Lance.
You said Demels? You said Demels were going to be, right?
If it's a nice day, Ben will bring his car out.
Okay.
Torak, excuse me.
There's going to be a lot of traffic. I'm thinking that you probably should have some sort of trash receptacle, some porta potties there.
We will have trash receptacles.
What about the porta potties and stuff?
We're checking into that at this point.
Okay. Should we make a motion to waive the reading?
Yes.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to waive the reading? Motion by Larry. Second, second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Motion to approve the waiver of the sound ordinance.
Motion by Michael. Second by Larry. Roll call.
Councilmember Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mayor Locken.
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer.
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor.
Yes.
That will be ordinance eight eighty-five.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Honorable mayor and council, you can see the latest star bond view from the drones this morning courtesy of our, our pilot Thatcher. You can see the, the current ball fields with the ball fields currently under construction. And here's a little better view with the subsurface that's currently being laid and the layout of the five fields.
So the dirt works going a little faster on these five?
Yeah. We, we haven't had, contrary to the, the article in the Eagle, there's been no permits pulled beyond the ball fields. But, you know, we're cautiously optimistic. You can see Arbor Creek, the community house and pools nearing completion. There's eighty-one percent of the current lots available have been filled. I'm sorry, nineteen percent with eighty-one percent still to be completed because we're currently only in, this is phase one and we, you may recall recently approved phase two, which is currently under construction at the moment. Cloverleaf, phases one and two are complete. We received the petitions and will be presenting the next meeting or two, the, those petitions and resolutions for improvement authorization. So we expect that phase three, which is thirty-four lots, should be completed very soon. This has been our, our fastest moving subdivision. And some views of Cloverleaf looking to the southeast with the foundations currently under construction. And then looking back to the northwest with you can see the detention pond and the city Work continues on Elk Ridge, which is a hundred percent sold. And you can see Rustic Creek is essentially ready to go.
Do you want to test a big elk ridge pushing the worst?
At this time, no, sir, we don't. I do know that for quite some time, they had approached this property owner and I believe some additional developers have as well, but there's no, no desire at this point for, for folks to sell. Just to let you know, tomorrow's the statewide tornado drill. That's why there was no sirens at noon today. And our police department, public works work together. We are, we have the storm shelters, you know, when we have a tornado watch that's opened and we have a protocol for that. So that essentially if it's during the day, public works opens it up. And then if it's after hours, PD on duty will unlock it when we hit a tornado watch. And then just a reminder, if you're interested in attending the upcoming fundraiser on April ninth, let me know and we'll make sure that we get your reservations for the, for the Just some upcoming agenda items that we have. We'll have some budget outlook and CIP discussion, equity and benefit fee follow-up and the city ground there at one ninety-ninth and twenty-third, that rezoning request, which the developer's calling it the big arm development. So somebody's going to the gun show. We'll have in April, city hall phones because our phone system's no longer supported. We'll talk about pool rates, municipal code cleanup, community center follow-up, and we'll have sign regulations, discussions, and then our updated service agreement with That concludes my report. If there are no questions for myself or staff, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Larry, what do you have? You good?
Yeah.
Good?
I'm good. I'm good also.
All right. We got a executive session. How long do we need to go?
We can do thirty to forty-five, whatever you are comfortable with.
Can we, are we able to end early?
No.
Oh. More than thirty seconds. Okay. Okay. Do I got a motion? Make a motion to have the executive session for thirty minutes.
Second.
Motion by Larry, second by Bren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And add motions for consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney client relationship to include the city attorney and city administrator if you need.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Director of the Court, there is no binding action taken during the executive session. It's a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Brent. All on paper say aye.
Aye.
Aye.